Father, we ask as we prepare to deal with our business today, the business of the county and of the city and of the state here this morning, we ask that things might go the way that you have them to go and not so much as the way that we want them to go, Father. Father, we just pray for each council member, for each official we have here, and particularly the law enforcement department, Father, we ask to bless them and give them what they need. Father, we ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Father, join me to pledge allegiance to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Join me in the place of Texas.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good morning this morning. Judge Cochrane is not with us today, so I'm going to fill in this morning. And at this time, Richard, do we have any special presentations?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioners, today we have two of my people that have earned their five-year awards. Ladies first. Dana Davis, Pem. Dispatch, as a dispatch supervisor for five years. The second one is Michael Lackey. He's been here for five years. He works with Lynn. He's there with divisions, transports, and he works on cars.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate that. Thank you, Richard. If any citizens have any items pertaining to an agenda item, the sheriff will be at the back of the room and he'll hand you out a form that you can fill out and sign up, and that way you can speak when your agenda item comes up. He'll turn it into the county clerk. She'll pass it up to the diocese and we'll discuss, edit that agenda item. So the sheriff's in the back of the room. If you do, raise your hand or turn around and get his attention, and he'll be glad to hand out the form to you. We'll move into the consent agenda. We'll have A through I today. I was an addendum that was added. So if any of the commissioners want to pull any of the consent agenda items off, I need to know which you'd like to call off for discussion. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Barton to approve the consent agenda item A through I. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Thank you. We'll move into business to be discussed about subdivision roads and plats. Road operations will be 1A. A public hearing will be to discuss and consider following proposed traffic regulations and take appropriate action. Mr. Lenny, you want to talk about those first?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. We have two areas in the Comanche Cove subdivision that I'd like for y'all to observe and discuss and consider placing a 20 mile per hour limit, speed limit zone on Woodmere. That would be your top picture. The reason for this area from the 1300 block to Hercules Court is this, is their ball field area. I'm asking you to consider placing a 20 mile per hour zone in that area. The next one, is it okay to take both, Steve?
There's, I have Park Drive as C also. Is A, B, and C's all three of those?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Yes, sir.
Your bottom picture involves two roadways. Park Drive comes off from the left down in and hits Peace River. This is around their swimming pool area and their HOA office. It's likely for you to consider placing a 20 mile per hour zone in those areas. Having said that, Road Operations does recommend that we place 20 mile per hour speed limit zones in these two areas.
Thank you, Mr. Lenny. If I'll open a public hearing, I believe this is in precinct two as well, but I'll open a public hearing at this time to discuss and consider proposed traffic regulations and establish a 20 mile per hour speed limit zone in Comanche Cove, precinct two, on A, B, and C, Woodmere Trail, Hercules, to Hercules Court, Peace River Drive to Park Drive, and then on Park Drive, A, B, and C, 1A, B, and C. So the public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak about this on the public hearing? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have any item they'd like to speak? Butch, would you like something? It's your precinct.
Just to propose to accept as directed in the agenda.
Is that a motion?
It is.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barton. Do I have a second to allow the speed limit signs to be put at this A, B, and C?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It'll pass 4-0. Second part goes into development and compliance. It's discuss and consider approval of the final plat for lots five and six, Block One, Six Oaks, Phase One. Mr. Lenny?
Commissioners, staff recommends that we table this item. It involves, these two lots are in the floodplain area, and it will involve a flood study. I'm asking you to table this, give them more time, if they do so wish, to do a flood study on this portion.
So you're asking to be tabled 8A?
Yes.
2A, so that's discuss and it's considered a final plat on lots five and six, Block One, Six Oaks, Phase One. You're asking it to be tabled?
Yes, sir.
Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Dever made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. It will be tabled and brought back at a later date, 4-0 vote. Item number two, public hearing to discuss and... ... as well. I'll open a public hearing to discuss and consider approval of the replat of Lot 176R, Unit 1, Pecan Plantation. Public hearing is now open if anyone wants to discuss or about this replat. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the replat of Lot 176R, Unit 1, Pecan Plantation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any more discussion? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Moving down our agenda to the 8B will be budget and finance. Item one, consider budget line amendments from the period May 5, 2015 through May 18, 2015, and take appropriate action. Mr. McBroom?
Good morning, Commissioners. The sheriff advises that in the dispatch area, there is a shortage of compensation line items for incentive and for holiday time and for overtime due to heavy call volume, due to weather events. The total that he asked to move is $19,500, and that would be to add $2,900 into incentive pay, $2,900 into holiday pay, and $13,700 into overtime pay. $7,500 of that would come from the health insurance line in dispatch that he will not need due to turnover, and the remainder of that would come from compensation and payroll items in the jail. That's 0105690, separate department. If you have questions about that, the sheriff is prepared to address the court.
Pecan retirement's considered into that as well. I saw an email this past week where that was considered as well. All the money that he's asking to move is coming out of his proposed, of his current budget. Is that correct?
Everything out of his current budget. Yes, sir.
You've heard the budget line amendments or any discussion by the court? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion and second to approve the amendment, please.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Are there any more discussion about these budget amendments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes 4-0 as well. Item number two, consider payment of bills for the period of May 5, 2015 through May 18.
Commissioner, the total of these bills come to $421,040.35. There are a few of the larger items. One is to Benny Keith Company in the amount of $13,536.94 for jail groceries. To Charter Communications, $13,183.26 for data transfer services, telecommunications and the like. To Holt Company of Texas, $20,447.06 for purchase of equipment. To Knight Security Systems, $98,339.80 for purchase and installation of security devices. To Somerville County, $29,564 for housing prisoners outside of Hood County. And then to the Texas Association of Counties, $93,151 for our participation in the insurance programs there. We request your approval to pay these bills.
Thank you, Mr. McBroom. I did hear the bill about Knight Security. Did I not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
It's not an agenda item, but I'd like to ask IT, what percentage of that are we complete on this building?
Well, I heard the bill payment for Knight Security, a pretty substantial amount. So what's the, where are we at on that building and where are we at on this building to be finished for security? Absolutely. We are currently right today working in the jail facility. They are installing the cameras, installing the gear, the network gear. Also, the computer system has been programmed. So that one is approximately, probably about 50 to 60 percent complete right now. The majority of what you see in front of you for payment terms right now is when we receive all of the equipment and actually check it and make sure that we have received the equipment. It is on site. We go ahead and move forward. We have received the equipment. We're able to pay that part of the invoice. What is remaining is the installation and the sign off and completion of each building. This building was pushed back because of the immediate need at the law enforcement center. So this building here actually has the equipment stored in one of these rooms right now presently today and is waiting. As soon as we complete jail, then we move on to this facility directly after that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You've heard the auditor's report on payment of bills. I'll accept a motion to ratify paying the bills.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton to ratify paying the bills. Are there any more discussion about the bills? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and that passes 4-0. We'll move to our miscellaneous section of the agenda. Item one, C1, will be consider and take appropriate action regarding requests by Children's Advocacy Center to start the use of the four corners of the square, the eight spots on May 26 instead of the approved already May 29 date, and it's for the playhouse fundraiser. I believe the sheriff's going to speak on this. We've already gave prior approval for it to be down there, but it was there over the Memorial Day weekend, and I believe he wants to ask for extension.
Yeah, Commissioners, a number of the builders that got involved in this event asked if there's any way they could have a little extra time to showcase their playhouses, which all this is going to benefit the Children's Advocacy Center. And so it was already approved last fall to start on the 29th and then run till the 14th, and then they'll pick them up by the 15th. That was already approved. So we're just asking to include today through, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in that, so they can get them out there a little earlier, if you approve it.
One reason is they actually had the fundraiser over the weekend for the Memorial Day celebration for the three days, and the house is down there this morning. It's been there, and instead of moving it and moving it back Friday, they're asking to go ahead and leave it from Tuesday to Friday if it would be appropriate for the court. So with that being said, Sheriff, will you handle that if this is approved? Will you make sure that works out?
Oh, yes.
Okay. To the judge's office and let them know we've approved it if we do so approve it?
I will let them know if it's approved.
Okay. With that being said, I'll make a motion that we approve this request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That does pass 4-0. If you'll take care of that with the judge's office, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, under miscellaneous, consider and take appropriate action regarding the request by CVV Director Steve Dietrich from the City of Granbury for the Lone Star Street Association to use the outside ring of the courthouse parking lot along Pearl Street only for a rotating display starting for historic automobiles starting 5 o'clock Friday, June the 12th through noon Saturday, June the 14th during their annual state run. Steve, thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much, Mr. Berry. Yes, I am here on behalf of the Lone Star Street Rods to request the closure of only the outer ring portion along Pearl Street for a revolving display of historic automobiles during their state run, June 12th through 14th. You may have read in the newspaper that this is a major gathering of car collectors that we're expecting in town. We're anticipating about 450 automobiles. The majority of the activities, the judging and everything, will take place at Hewlett Park. They would like to display some of the automobiles up on the square to draw attention to their event and to draw people down to the park for the, for the events down there. So they would rotate the display every, you know, three or four hours, bring different cars while, depending on what's happening there at Hewlett Park, which class is being judged and that type of thing. They would, they would rotate them out.
Steve, you are, and you told me before court started, they've already filed their proper paperwork with the city?
Yes, sir.
And liability insurance is in place, and you'll see that the county has a copy of the liability?
Absolutely. We have a, we have a certificate naming the county as a certificate holder.
You've heard from Mr. Dietrich. Does anyone have questions from the court? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes 4-0. Thank you. Item number three, will be consider and take appropriate actions to approve the county clerk's archival plan. Ms. Lang was before the court last, two weeks ago when we met, and upon taking it to the county attorney and then reading a little deeper, we have to file a public hearing notice. And if you'll notice, in the Hood County News, Saturday, May the 23rd, public notice was filed about the Hood County County Clerk archival plan. Public hearing will be held today. To, for any citizens, there's courage to attend to discuss this archival plan. Would that be correct, Katie?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. I asked for a public hearing to discuss and consider the preservation of six volumes of the Hood County Clerk's historical record books and the digital conversion of 30,000 microfished images.
Okay. We, we passed this last week, two weeks ago, and then we figured out we had to have the public hearing and had to be legally noticed, so that's what she's doing. So at this time, I'll open a public hearing and see if anyone wants to discuss it from the general public. Public hearing will now be open. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and then I'll consider and take appropriate action to approve the county clerk's archival plan. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number four, I believe it was county clerk as well, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign a contract with GHS Collections for the collection of the OCA Collection Improvement Program. Mr. Armstrong?
Morning, gentlemen. This is a contract for, to allow an outside collection agency to collect fines and costs and restitution on cases that are 60 days past due. As Mr. Barton knows and the rest of you are aware too, that the OCA collections places, you know, tells us a lot of things, conditions that we have to meet. And we had a meeting with them, oh, I don't know, about three or four weeks ago, and the stuff that they told us we could do last year, they say we can't do this year. So what this does is, this is a free, this costs nothing to Hood County, and it frees up a person in our office to not have to do this. We have four other offices in the county that already use this same program, which would be all four JPs. So basically, it's to save, save the county some money. It's ask for a new employee or go with, go with this collection agency. They get their fees off the, off the collection. The law allows them to charge 30 percent of the fines in court or whatever fees that they, they go after, that they charge defendants.
When I look at this, Dean, on the contract, it's Graves, Humphries, and Stoll. Is that the?
That's Net Data.
That's Net Data?
Sure is.
Okay.
And the, the only difference between the contract that I'm going to ask to be signed and the one that you have in your hand?
Yes, sir.
Is the treasurer informed me that they pay out, was it quarterly instead of monthly? And, and I contacted Net Data and we set up emails, and they told me to change the contract since it was in a Word document to fulfill her needs, and that is done. So the one that I'm going to have signed actually has what the...
Or quarterly. Okay.
So how much do you, does this collect quarterly?
We've never done it, Commissioner.
How much do we collect right now on a quarterly basis?
On fines, court costs?
Mm-hmm. That are 60 days or more?
We don't track that. I can, I can give you an estimate of how much we pull in. We pull in about a million dollars a year, okay? But that's, that's not 60-day-plus cases. These are people who don't pay, and they haven't. The, the people that, you gotta, people who are put on probation, they generally pay overall. The, the probation department takes care of that. These are mostly going to be absconders, but it is, it will hit some of the probation people if, if they're 60 days late. So we've never had to track it, so I can't give you a number.
Any more questions? That answer your question, Commissioner?
If I may, we're not losing anything. These monies, we, that we will still get our full money. The only monies that...
Less 30 percent?
No, 30 percent are added, and that's the fee that goes to GHS. The monies that the judge collected or ordered, we still get that same amount. We lose nothing. It's all on the defendant.
Good for that.
Either other, Commissioner, have any questions for Mr. Armstrong? If not, then I'll take action, consider and take action to authorize a judge to sign this contract with, for this program. Is there any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I took Mr. Taut's first, so I made, Commissioner Berry made the motion, Commissioner Taut seconded. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It'll pass 4-0. Thank you. Item number five, consider for approval changes to the step plan policy and take appropriate action. Richard?
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning before, I have a change in the current compensation plan. Under currently, if an elected official or appointed official appoints someone to a new position in their department, they're allowed to go up to step six per current policy. What we're finding more and more on a regular basis is that by promoting individuals been here for any length of time into the step six position, it actually hurts the employee. They get little increase for the promotion, added job responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera. So what we're asking the Commissioners Court to, to look at and consider is allowing the elected official or department head to move that person above step six within that grade under two conditions. One, that individual has unique relevant experience to that position in that field, and the second requirement, it would, it would generate cost savings to the county. So even though the promotion goes into above step six, the person is rewarded for the length of service, get a competitive salary, but yet it's less than the person that's leaving the position. And the person that moved into, was promoted, is replaced by an individual at the lower end of the salary. So those two figures there conceivably could generate substantial savings to the county and yet reward the long-term tenure employees. At present, present policy really punishes the long-term employee for, for their tenure. So we're asking you to take that consideration and agree to accept this amendment.
Still have to come back to court, just like we do if you're hiring somebody just up to a step six level?
Correct. I have developed a form that we, we in HR would, would look at, make sure that meets the two criteria. If it meets the two criteria, we'll place it on the agenda for Commissioners Court consideration and approval.
Has to be a like job, the way I read this. Somebody coming from really, this is gonna, this is happening when people are having 10 or 12, 10 or 12 years and they're trying to change positions or promotions in the sheriff's department.
Correct. And what we're seeing is longevity pay increase, even though people say we'd lose a lot of people in the county, or turnover's high. We're seeing longevity pay over the last 10 years just really, really increased. So we're having people at the top end of the salary staying here longer and longer, and we want to recognize those folks.
And so when we talked about this, Le and you, last week, a lot of times they're trying to fix, fit people on, you're just moving them a CS level, which muddies the water. When you change a CS level and you take somebody from an office manager position or a chief de, or not chief deputy, but it wouldn't work, only one of those, but, or you can't just change a CS level because you already have all of the certain people in one of CS levels. Is that correct?
You've got three or four people in that category already, then you start looking at the correct positioning of the new person in the higher grade level, and that just disrupts the whole, whole system. So it'd be only under very unique circumstances that this amendment would, you know, go into place.
And it also says in the policy that county auditor or county treasurer must verify for funds. Is that correct?
That's done in the process, was reviewed before it comes to, to the court.
Have they both seen this policy change? Commissioners, does anyone have any questions of...
I'd like to comment on this, Mr. Berry. I think this is good. We got on the right track. We changed this years back to step six and seen some more flaws in it. This is an upgrade to reward our employees. Situations like a 20-year employee retires, you've got a 15-year employee right behind for the promotion. This will help them get into right step grade, pay scale to reward the employees. I, I fully agree with this and I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Do I have a question, though? So the step six will go away completely. Is that correct?
No, step six stays in there for, you know, people...
For new people we're hiring?
Right.
This is for the people that have X amount of years or, or as you say, unique or relevant experience?
Exactly.
So they'll go through your office, and then they have to be verified by the treasurer auditor to make sure funds are available?
That's correct.
And still come to court?
Before it comes to court, it'll be verified that, you know, money's there.
Okay, that's fine. So I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion about this? I have a motion by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Barton.
I just have one question. Now, what if someone brings in someone from the outside that's got multiple years of experience? Are they still limited to the step six entry?
They will meet the criteria of the unique relevant experience. Now, will they meet the second criteria? They create efficiency for the county.
I see it as what's happened in the past is what Commissioner Dever said, is, Ms. Casper's in the audience, so I'll use hers. An ACA, an assistant county attorney wants to come from Parker County or Wise County. What's now, they're being strangled, held at sixes. But this, if they come exactly with 15 or 10 or eight or years of experience, then that, if it's in their budget, and really I see this as allowing, there's people that's hated the step plan for years. They've hated the fact that the courts, the one that set the step plan up seven, eight years ago. This gives them more freedom to work within their budget, okay? But it still has to be, two or three items have to be met before it gets to, you can't just go in there and give everybody a raise and, because you've got to have it, money in your budget, but you've also got to meet benchmarks and I, and Richard pointed out something good to me. We're losing good people and good employees, and we're penalizing people to make a promotion. Somebody that's a 15-year lieutenant doesn't want to go to the captain's spot or sergeant's spot when they have to go back to a six. So that's what this, I mean, that's one of the reasons. I have a motion by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Barton. Is there any more discussion? If not, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 4-0. Thank you. Item number six, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the district attorney to hire and promote an employee or replace retiring office manager... and promote an employee or replace retiring office manager in appropriate pay grade step Hello, Mr. Christian?
Good morning, Commissioners.
I've handed out a form that explains the situation in his office where he's basically doing what number five was. And we're trying to avert breaking policy and then following policy. But if we're going to talk about any names, I'd like to go to executive session. If not, you can read what's in front of you and see the CS levels and the step levels that I've outlined. And he has an employee that's retiring after X amount of years, trying to hire an employee after it's been posted with HR and the point he's picked, but he has not offered the job of that position because obviously it wouldn't fit within the criteria of the policy. So if you want to talk about individual people, I'd like to recess and go to executive session. If not, as you read that, you can see that he fits them on the CS step level and fits them appropriately to the way that the wording would be of the policy. Robbie, any questions or anything you'd like to say?
I really don't. I think that the discussion for item number five really covers what I'm trying to do here. And I have proposed, but I do, there is a person that works for the county now that has a lot of experience with the county, probably as much as, I don't know if many people work for the county have worked as long as she has. It's a long, long time. And even with this proposed step would be a, would be a significant savings to the county in my budget.
And then you're going to replace the level that this person leaves, that the CS four level would not be, where they've already topped out, would be back to an entry level or with appropriate experience coming back before the court?
Right, and, right.
Any Commissioner have any questions for the DA?
That's a prime example of why we changed that policy to reward employees that have been here 12, 15, 20 years.
I am sure there are going to be an issue or two that someone has that we've probably